Thank you, and Chris, will you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight on all the votes, because one councilman is remote, we have to take a roll call vote on all of them. Roll call the members present.
Ron Bacon.
Eric.
David Hockmeister.
Yeah.
Ted Metzger.
Present.
Brad Overton.
Here.
Richard Reed.
Present.
Greg Richmond.
Here.
Chris Wetstein.
Here.
And just for the record, I can see Ron. We can, you know, feel to see him.
You don't have to show us that. I'm just keeping up here, so.
First up is tabled items, Property Tax Assessment Board. It's the Property Tax Board of Appeals, PETA Board. And we did reach out and had a few names, but according to the way the law is written, it has to be somebody that has a Level 2 or 3 certification. And we got the email that Barbie Shelton is a previous employee of the Assessor's Office, currently works in Stormwater. She's maintained her Level 3 certification and would be happy to serve in that position.
I'll nominate Barbie Shelton.
Anybody else?
I'll second the nomination.
Okay.
So you don't think you could have like Don Lee that's been a-
No, he's Republican. Ask if he's Democrat.
He's a Democrat.
Don Lee?
Yes.
Oh.
Oh, Don Lee is your thing.
Oh, I'm thinking, I'm saying, I'm thinking somebody's.
And he's a, he's an appraiser and a realtor, so.
Is he a Level?
I don't know.
Who, a 3?
No, right now.
This is required to be a Level 2 or 3. Why don't we go with this one now and then next year after we've had more time to research that? I mean, I was thinking, I don't know why, I was thinking Don Brooks, because Don Brooks was mentioned before.
No, it's Don Lee.
Yeah, Don Lee, I know, yeah, thank you. So is it all right if we go with-
Sure.
-to vote on Barbie then? Okay, we need a roll call vote on Barbie Shelton.
You don't mean to do them? Okay, sorry. Ron Bacon.
Yes.
David Hockmeister.
Aye.
Ted Metzger.
Aye.
Brad Overton.
Aye.
Richard Reed.
No.
Greg Richmond.
Yes.
Chris Wetstein.
No.
Okay, so that vote is 5 to 2. The two no votes were Rick Reed and Chris Wetstein. So Barbie Shelton will be our appointment to the PETA Board.
Who's contacted, you contacted Sarah?
Sarah.
Sarah, yeah. Now, the new business approval of minutes for the January 6th meeting. I did have a couple of corrections, and I let Christine know earlier today, and she's probably corrected them by now.
Yes, sir.
The ones I looked at were on page 5. We had the whole group to do together. We did several of them together, but then we singled out the Alcoholics Beverage Board and the Property Tax Board of Appeals. And so I Xed out that large group there on page 5. And then there was a vote, probably because I'm, I will admit I'm not perfect, I make mistakes. I probably did not mention the vote at the top of the page. Brad Overton made the motion, and there was a second by Ted Metzger, and what was that on? That was on the group, the large group, and that vote was 7 to 0. That large group was the people serving on our appointments on Economic Development Advisory Council, Redevelopment Commission, Economic Development Commission, Economic Development Coalition of Southwest Indiana, Newburgh Economic Development Commission, Tourism Commission, Economic Development Advisory Council, Councilman Appointment. So that was a 7-0 vote on that group. And then I thought that maybe we ought to replace the name at the bottom of the page instead of Property Tax Assessment Board. It's the Property Tax Board of Appeals, to be more specific. That's okay. So that's what I picked out as being the only mistakes, and again, I probably made the mistake of the 7-0 vote not announcing that. Anybody have anything else?
Motion to approve, no corrections.
Second.
Okay, the motion by David and second by Rick.
Roll call. Ron Bacon.
Aye.
David Hockmeister.
Aye.
Ted Metzger.
Aye.
Brad Overton.
Aye.
Richard Reed.
Aye.
Greg Richmond.
Aye.
Chris Wetstein.
Yes.
7-0 is the vote on that one, then. I'm writing all these down for the roll call every time. Next up is Economic Development Business, the Tax Phase In Preliminary Resolution of Rustic Hills Solar Farm. And let me preface this by letting everybody know that we're not the ones making the decision whether they come in or not. The people who make the decision, you've got all these other boards that it has to go through, like the Zoning, Planning Commission, and the Commissioners that it has to go through. They have to make sure that they've got everything in order according to the rules and laws of Warwick County. All this as far as a preliminary resolution that will be the first hearing on a property tax phase-in for them. And this particular development is probably the second largest development Warwick County's ever had in its history. Identify yourself and go ahead, please.
Okay, good evening. Steve Rowley, Economic Development. As Greg said, I'm here to discuss the potential economic impact and tax phase-in application that was for Rustic Hills Solar, which was provided by Clonera. I'm joined here in the audience to let you guys know by Jared McKee, who is actually with Clonera, who will be building and owning this project, and also Herb Davis, who represents Economic Development and the Redevelopment Commission, in case they have questions that I cannot answer or to clarify. As Greg mentioned, due to a lot of questions, I have been asked quickly to go over what tonight's meeting is and what tonight's meeting isn't. Tonight's meeting is not a project approval meeting. We're not going to cover the Warwick County Solar Ordinance. This isn't the Board of Zoning, Area Plan, a site review, or drainage review. Those meetings have not happened yet for this project and would be down the road. And this project, we need to go through all of those checks and balances, as Greg mentioned. It's the preliminary meeting on tax phase-in. Tax phase-in is focused on the economic development impact of a project. An affirmative vote tonight moves this to a second meeting, which is actually the public hearing and the confirming resolution. Tax phase-in has been very successful in Warwick County to promote economic development, incentivize new investment, and add jobs and wages. Any qualifying investment in real and personal property can apply for our tax phase-in program. It's been extremely successfully used, not only to attract new business and new investment to our community, but also has been used by existing businesses as they look to stay in Warwick County, to expand in Warwick County, and to grow in Warwick County. If approved, just like it sounds, taxes are phased in over time. There's a 10-year max on a tax phase-in. Tax phase-in is scored on investment, jobs, wages, and its overall impact in the community. Specifically, Rustic Hills Solar Project, County Council in the packet should have gotten a whole presentation on this project, so I'm not going to go into every single bullet point or detail that you guys received. That packet included project details, maps, specs, equipment. I'm going to give a quick summary. It's a 200-megawatt solar project. It's broken into actually 200-megawatt projects. That's why there's a resolution for Rustic Hills 1 and Rustic Hills 2, because it's being done as two separate 100-megawatt projects. 200 megawatts is enough to power 38,000 Hoosier homes. It's going to connect to the 138-kV transmission line, which runs right through the project footprint. It's, as Greg said, it's a $250-million investment, quarter of billion dollars, and one of the largest single investments in Warwick County. Clonera is the one that's bringing this project to us. They're headquartered out of Boise, Idaho. They've done successful economic development, they've done successful solar field projects across the U.S., including the solar field that's on the infield of the Indianapolis Motor Speedway here in Indiana. This project has an expected lifespan of 35 years. It's expecting to be three to four full-time jobs. It's expecting to generate 300 construction jobs. And that's kind of a quick summary of the project. We can get into details or what you guys have provided in your packet if there's any questions specifically about the economic development impact, and that's what we're here tonight for. It is expected to generate $25 million in new tax revenue for the Redevelopment Commission that will go right back into Warwick County. Those dollars are used to upgrade our parks, roads, infrastructures, and specifically will also be used to attract new jobs, investment, smart manufacturing here to our community. To put $25 million into perspective, a lot of people say the $12 million the county got from the American Recovery Act is kind of a once-in-a-generation opportunity to have some change and impact here in our community. Or the $50 million that the region, four counties, got in the Ready Grant is being billed as a stepping stone for future development of our region. So $25 million coming into this because of this project that we can put back into our community is also coming to us without the two tools that normally, if we want to raise money as a municipality or as a county, you have to take out debt or you have to raise taxes. So this is being done without either of those. This tax phase-in does not raise anyone's taxes. As a matter of fact, increasing assessed value of our community has a long-term tax lowering as more and more development and assessed value. It has a lowering rate effect on tax rates. It's not lost revenue for County General. You guys know County General is a levy-based fund. The state sets that. More development into the community does not raise the amount of money that County General and our large funds can get. This tax phase-in solely impacts the Redevelopment Commission because this is located on the state, in the State 61 Tiff District. Redevelopment Commission is okay with tax phase-in for this project and unanimously supports moving this forward, 6 to 0. I mentioned 300 good-paying construction jobs. A lot of people say construction jobs are temporary. It's only a year. 100% correct. 300 jobs, when you run it through a whole bunch of databases for the economic impact for that, a conservative estimate is 25 to $30 million into our local economy. I've had other estimates that were significantly more. It'd be mostly in 2023 and a real boost to our economy coming out of the COVID pandemic. This project is also solar and renewables. It is going to help us attract future jobs. I think that when I first started, Larry Taylor was up here talking about quality of place is really important. People want to live in places that have quality of place. I can tell you, as the Economic Development Director, a large majority of projects looking to land in Indiana and in southwest Indiana and in Warwick County want access to renewable energy. It is going to be a metric, the same way they want to be near a rail spur, they are putting up on that list of priorities access to renewables. We have companies in our backyard, including our larger employers, that have already had carbon-neutral pledges for 2040 or 2050. It's going to be a positive impact on the jobs of tomorrow and the jobs for the next generation here. Moving on, as far as how this thing was scored, I mentioned that we have a scoring process here based on investment, taxes, and impact. Maximum of 10 years. This project scored a nine-year personal property tax abatement, and it scored eight years on the real property improvements. It was unanimously approved, as I mentioned, by EDAC, the Economic Development Advisory Council, and the Redevelopment Commission. EDAC was put in place to advise County Council on tax phases. Economic Development Advisory Council voted 10 to 0 to approve moving this forward. The Redevelopment Commission, because we're in Sitsin State Road 61 Tiff, also had to vote on this. They voted 6 to 0 in favor of it. As review, these boards are our economic development boards. They are appointed stakeholders in our community by County Council here and also our county commissioners. They are made up of stakeholders in construction, healthcare, banking, finance, entrepreneurs, business owners, elected officials, and a school board member. That group and the Economic Development Department has the recommendation tonight to approve this preliminary resolution, move this forward to the second reading and the public hearing on this issue, which would come up at either the next or an upcoming County Council meeting. And I'll leave it at that for questions and a couple of rest of my bullet points.
I'd like to ask our legal counsel, will this be because of advertisement requirements for second reading at our March or April meeting?
I believe we can still do it at the March meeting.
Normally, we advertise it, yeah, we'd wait until the first, the results of tonight's meeting, and then we advertise it. But I don't think that advertisement needs to go in the paper for next month until the 21st or 22nd, somewhere around there, to be, which is the same day we normally would advertise it. So we could get it on the next month's meeting.
If it's not for an additional appropriation. Okay, I'd like to open it up for discussion to the counsel. Questions?
I have a question about the 300 good-paying skilled jobs.
Yep.
Is there any guarantee those will be filled by Warwick County residents? Or will they be bringing their own crews in from Bloomington?
Jared, you want to come up and address that?
Yep. Jared McKee, Clonera.
Good evening.
Good evening. So yes, so our, our objective and goal, any project that we go into, is always to hire as much local labor as can be supported by the local job force. So typically what we do when we go into, to build a project, so we are the developer of that project, and we get everything set up, and we acquire the land, and we go through the interconnection, we get our commercial contracts, we kind of put everything in place, and we also finance the project. And then what we do is we have a partner, and that partner that we work with is typically what most people think of like a general contractor. If you're going out and you're doing commercial real estate, it would be a general contractor. We call them an EPC, Engineering Procurement and Construction. And so with them, they will go out and they will do job fairs. And so they'll go out into the local community, and so they'll do job fairs, and they always start local first. We have both a, I'll call it a good neighbor incentive to start first, and there's also an economic incentive to start locally first. When you're bringing in a lot of labor from outside, you have to give them a per diem. There's a lot of financial reasons why you really want to, as much as possible, hire local. And so that's really our process. As we engage with and we work with our EPC, they have job fairs throughout the local area. And then once they've hired as much as they can hire here locally, then they expand what I will call to the state market. And being that we're close, you know, to the kind of the tri-state area, they might go out a little bit further from there. But that's kind of how it grows. It starts within the county first and then kind of grows from there based on what the local job market can support.
So the answer is no.
That was a lot of talking. As far as guarantees?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's not a guarantee, but that is 100% our objective.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And I would just add like that, too, that, you know, I get that question a lot in economic development. If Alcoa could hire people only from Warwick County, they would. If Toyota could hire people only from Gibson County, they would. They go to schools, they go to fairs, they bring in teachers in our community to learn about manufacturing. And if we held them to only hire locally, they'd be out of business, because they wouldn't be able to fill those jobs. So I just wanted to add that point, that that's a common question that we get, and it's really hard to guarantee that everything stays within a local budget, just especially because of the size of that workforce. It's not, you know, two or three people that we're talking about.
But after the project's completed, there'll be two jobs, is that correct?
Somewhere in the 2 to 4 range. I've been saying 3 to 4, David, based on the information that I have.
And those might not be Warwick County residents, too, right?
Again, they're going to be high-paying, good jobs, and I think, just like we're all trying to hire, everybody looks to be local and close first.
How long's construction last?
I have 12, 12 months.
12 to 18 months.
Okay.
And then when it closes down, they have a reserve to tear it down and put it back down to agricultural areas after it's all done, right?
So all I can, I can, all that I can address for that is my own knowledge of the Warwick County Solar Ordinance that makes, that makes them put in a decommissioning plan and putting an irrevocable letter of credit for 125% of the value of taking it all down in the county's name. And then that needs to, in the county ordinance, that needs to get reevaluated every five years for inflation or cost or whatever else. And if the cost, you know, 35 years, every five years it gets reevaluated. And I can just say that that's one of the tenants of the Warwick County Solar Ordinance.
Good. Good plan.
Well, one of the things, I know there's no carcinogenic materials involved, but how come solar panels aren't allowed in landfills?
So I'll let Jared answer that question, but as far as, what I know is that I thought that some people thought they were going in landfills. There's no cadmium and stuff like that in these panels, but I will also say that there are, as technology advances, there's now, I think, 22, 24 recyclable facilities in North America for these panels. So I think that that was a larger concern, David, a little further back. Panels were made a little differently and stuff. Technology has caught up, and there's value in these materials to recycle them. I don't know if that answers the question.
I think so.
Steve, I got a couple of questions.
Yep.
How many, and I may have just missed the acreage, but how many acres are we looking at here?
I think it's 1,600 acres.
1,600. And is all of that just undeveloped agriculture, or is any of that forested wood or?
So again.
I mean, I've got a general idea of what it is, but.
Jared, but it's all, you know, it's all private property that's either going to be, would either be leased or sold to this project. And I don't believe, if you look at the map that I think David has there, the way that I see it and the way that one of Jared's coworkers that we've been asking questions to a lot has talked about it, is that actually the vegetate, the tree buffers and trees that are there that are on that property, if you look, are being used as buffers to shield the project and not being taken down.
And then another question is where will these panels, where are they manufactured? Because I know a very large percentage of solar panels are manufactured overseas. Well, what's the percentage of these?
Yeah, so they will be manufactured basically in Southeast Asia, so between Vietnam, yeah. Southeast Asia, so that's where your typical supply chain that supports the solar painting manufacturing industry is all based. And so it's, you're looking at, you know, Vietnam, Taiwan, India, that part of the world is where.
China as well.
China, we actually don't supply our panels directly from China. There is associated tariffs with China, and so we actually source from outside.
Okay, because I thought there was some tariffs placed on the Chinese panels.
Yep, that's correct.
A few years back. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I have a question here about the economic benefits, so. First, I will comment, though, that this 35-year project, sounds like a long, long time to some, I guess, but I'm remembering that 35 years ago, my wife and I built our home, and we're still in it. And I'd like to go say that it would revert back to farmland, but I don't guess it ever will. So I do like the idea that this project reverts back to farmland for my grandchildren.
It can.
Oh, it's not? I thought it was required. Is that not true?
I mean, I don't, I don't know with the Warwick County Solar, you may have more detailed Warwick County Solar Ordinance. Oftentimes, again, if it's leased land, it actually obviously stays in the property owner's possession. So it goes back to that family to use it however they would like to use it.
Okay, well.
If it's, if it's sold, then there's a question of what happens to that, that land afterwards.
I guess, let me, let me, we.
To answer your question, Chris, if, if we take ag land for a park, or for a hospital, or for a subdivision, you know, like my subdivision, I don't see it ever going back.
I guess, really to correct myself, after 35 years, this project is dismantled. Is that correct?
That's the expected lifespan of this project.
I see nodding. Is that correct or not?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
That is the intent, yes. The project has a lifespan of 35 years. Typically, what happens is, and I don't have the exact information on the conditional use permit, but typically there's a lifespan associated with that. And so when it's done, you go back, and you have to get an additional conditional use permit. And so at that time, the folks that are going to be, you know, in jurisdiction at that time would make that decision whether or not it would or wouldn't. I don't know what it will be. It absolutely has the opportunity and the ability to go back to ag land. So there's actually not any concrete that's put into the project. So typically, how a solar project is built is it sits on steel piers that are driven in, or steel piles that are driven into the ground. And then that's actually the foundation for the racking system that sits on top. And so once the project has met its full life expectancy, all those steel piles can be pulled right back out, and the project can go back to whatever use it had before, whether that was ag or that was something else. And we typically will have vegetation management and plans to really help the soil growth. We just went through a whole kind of process for our previous project that were, we just permitted down in Lynn County, down in Cedar Rapids, Iowa, and so we talked a lot through, like, you know, what was the proper mechanism for making sure that we could actually be adding to the soil benefits during the, during the lifespan of the project? Any other questions?
Well, I have a question about that economics, but I guess to clarify on that, though, there, this, you say the intention is to dismantle and put it back to the way it was.
Yes.
Can we say that?
Yeah, that's fine.
But there's, yet again, there's no guarantee.
There's no guarantee.
Like there's, I think was a good question earlier about the employment.
That's correct.
So, okay, the question I have on the economic benefits, just simply hear a sentence that I don't understand. Over $750,000 in new local long-term output for Warwick County. I have no idea what that means.
Okay, so I think that was in the Clonera presentation.
Yes.
And Tom, who's not here tonight with Clonera, would be the one I would call up for that question. But basically, when you talk about that the long-term project is going to have three to four jobs, that's when they talk about long-term output. And so if I, you know, I get my wage from Warwick County, but my wage also goes, I have a local person prepare my taxes. I wash my car here, buy food, you know, I go to the store, all of those things. So I think that that number, when it talks about long-term output, is just the, talking specifically about those project jobs, if that makes sense. And Chris, I'll just add that the Warwick County Solar Ordinance does have a vegetation plan. It has to be done with natural pollinating plants and native to, to the area plants to back up what Jared said, and that's part of the Warwick County Solar Ordinance.
So basically, are you saying that that $750,000 is what Warwick County would benefit from those, having those two to four new employees?
So I believe that's where that's at.
Does that sound right?
Yeah.
I just didn't understand that sentence, and now I think I do.
One more question. I do know it's a private land transaction. We don't have any say-so over that. But a lot of people are wondering, with all the unproductive strip ground in Warwick County, why did they pick this premium farmland to do this on rather than the strip ground? Is there some strategic advantage, or is there just not enough land available? A lot of people want to know why we're not using more unproductive land.
A lot of times, flat land and being near the transmission line is one of the key predictors, is the projects that we've researched around the country, including, as you mentioned, in Iowa, which is similar ag production land here in the community. I also know that it's very difficult to develop, redevelop mine land. It's not where, you know, it's not where Deaconess is building. It's, it's a challenge. And so I don't know if there's anything else that you want to add to that. But a lot of times, just like a project needs to land by railroads or where there's electric capability, these projects need to land where it's close to the grid, it's on a transmission line, and so, and the availability of land.
So doesn't the transmission line go all the way north through Warwick County?
Transmission line zigs and zags and goes.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
One thing I could add to that as well is, is also, you know, there's the other part of this where you have a willing landowner as well. And so that, that always is, is a part of the, the puzzle of making sure that, you know, we're able to cite a project in the most appropriate grace that we can find.
Thank you.
Any further questions from the council? At this time, I'd entertain a motion for the preliminary.
So moved.
Motion by Rick. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Chris.
This will be 2022-01.
01. And I will read it at this time. It's Warwick County Council Resolution Number 2022-01. A preliminary resolution declaring an economic revitalization area for real and personal property, including utility distributable property tax phase in. Rustic Hill Solar LLC.
So now I roll call?
I'm sorry, yes, a roll call, yes.
Ron Bacon?
Aye.
David Hockmeister?
Nay.
Ted Metzger?
Nay.
Brad Overton?
Aye.
Richard Reed?
Yes.
Greg Richmond?
Yes.
Chris Wetstein?
Yes.
So I do have a comment. I mean, we still got another, you know, we've got our next meeting to still, I mean, this hasn't finalized anything at this point in time. But I think there, there's a part of me that, and just kind of, you know, harkening back to old advice and different things, because, I mean, we're obviously going to be securing some new tax revenue here, which is fantastic. I don't know, I mean, everything seems really thought out and I don't see, it's not as if we're bringing in some kind of, like a battery plant that could be leaking off acid or if we're talking about, you know, I mean, just like nuclear power, you know, some things like that. I mean, this seems very environmentally, I don't know if unintensive is a word, but a, a very low environmental impact. So I mean, there seems to be a lot of good things here. I'm almost one of those things where you think about there's almost, I don't know, it almost seems like there's too many good things. I don't know, it just seems really like a very, you know, and it's not as if we're clearing off, you know, thousands of acres of forested land. This sounds very similar to what's kind of up off of 69, that little, I don't know what mile marker that is, but it kind of reminds me of that. Is that kind of similar in size to that one or?
I don't know how big that one is, to tell you the truth. I can look that up and like you said, there's more time before the, before the next meeting.
I mean, it seems like a really good deal. I always just kind of, and maybe just need to review some more things. But I mean, it seems like a, you know, a good opportunity, but I, you know, it is the, you know, the, the job thing is the one that kind of gnaws at me. I mean, I did vote for it, but I mean, I, I think that's the part that kind of, seems like we're making a lot of revenue here, but I am still looking for, that's the part that kind of still troubles me somewhat, so. But anyway, that's just me.
If you have any other questions.
Talking out loud, yeah, sorry. But I just kind of.
Because we have two resolutions, don't we? Because it's broken into two?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm going to read that vote was five yes, two no, and the nays were David Hockmaster and Ted Metzger. Is there a second one I need to read? I don't.
I'm looking for my copy.
I downloaded everything, but I can't find it here. Okay. You supposed to sign this? Make sure it's not buried in there somewhere. I don't sign them? This is preliminary resolution? I don't know. You should be even on the reservation here, shouldn't you?
Okay.
Yeah, right. I think so.
Yeah, here's a copy of it.
I go ahead and sign this, can I?
Yeah.
That's for two. You should have one for Rustic Hills, one and one for Rustic Hills two, because it's split into two.
This is right.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay.
Now I read the second one here.
Yes.
And this would be 02?
Yes, sir.
Warwick County Council Resolution Number 2022-02. A preliminary resolution declaring an economic revitalization area for real and personal property, including utility distributable property tax phase in. Rustic Hill Solar Two LLC. The first one was Solar One. And I need a motion for that.
So moved.
Motion by Rick. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Chris.
Roll call. Ron Bacon?
Aye.
David Hockmeister?
Nay, but I would like to interrupt and say at this time that I don't think that, really that area qualifies for revitalization area. That's what I thought we was doing first, but you know, really it's pretty prime ground. I don't think it qualifies for revitalization area. So I'm a nay.
Ted Metzger?
Nay.
Brad Overton?
Aye.
Richard Reed?
Yes.
Greg Richmond?
Yes.
Chris Wetstein?
Yes.
Okay, and that motion also passes five to two. And that being the noes were David Hockmaster and Ted Metzger.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just need something to, I guess. Next up is commissioner business. We have a transfer, transfer from 8950.31110. Expenses $5,000. Transfer to 8950.21100. Supplies $5,000. Need a motion for the transfer.
Motion approved.
Motion by David?
I'll second it.
Second by Chris. Any discussion on this item? Roll call.
Oh. Ron Bacon?
Aye.
David Hockmeister?
Aye.
Ted Metzger?
Aye.
Brad Overton?
Aye.
Richard Reed?
Yes.
Greg Richmond?
Yes.
Chris Wetstein?
Yes.
That vote is seven zero. Salary ordinance Economic Development Director. $98,221. We need a motion for that.
So moved.
Motion by Rick. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ted Metzger. Now discussion. Hearing none. I'll call for a roll call vote.
Ron Bacon?
Aye.
David Hockmeister?
Nay.
Ted Metzger?
Aye.
Brad Overton?
Nay.
Richard Reed?
Yes.
Greg Richmond?
Yes.
Chris Wetstein?
Yes.
These is different.
And that was five to two. The two no votes were David Hockmaster and Brad Overton. Next up is sheriff's business. I'm going to read these. These are salary ordinances that are hazard pay. This is salary ordinance only, it's not additionals. You have to do that some other time. For deputies, that would be the sheriff, chief deputy and two lieutenants. $66,000 total. It's like 1,500 each, I think. Nine sergeants, 31 deputies also included in that bunch. And for jailers, 13 of them at 1,500 each is $19,500. Kitchen staff, five of them at $1,500 hazard pay at the $7,500 total. Judicial security officers, two of them, $1,500 each, $3,000 total. The maintenance person, there's just one, $1,500, $1,500 total. Office staff, four at a thousand each for $4,000 total. Dispatchers, eight at 1,500 each for $12,000. The total will be 77 at 1,500 each for a total of $113,500. This is for a salary ordinance, need a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Rick. Is there a second?
Second, and these are from COVID relief fund.
Correct.
Yes, the hazard pay would come from COVID relief fund.
Ron Bacon?
Aye.
David Hockmeister?
Aye.
Ted Metzger?
Aye.
Brad Overton?
Aye.
Richard Reed?
Yes.
Greg Richmond?
Yes.
Chris Wetstein?
Yes.
And that vote is seven zero. For sheriff's business commissary report, you all have received that. I read through it.
Sheriff Mike Wilder, yeah, since that report, that's due biannually. Obviously on this one, I've included a list of larger purchases. I didn't receive any questions, so I won't try to make this meeting go any longer, but obviously you can see every year we purchase cars out of there, different things. This is, I think everybody knows, but our commissary is fees that we are collecting from inmates when we sell chips, foods, phones. We have a new thing called chirps. Basically it's a phone and a, it can only text on it, but with today's technology, they love it. They can text with their, we can monitor it, still done on a private network. It's not out there, they can't do things, but makes good money. But there's a lot of other things I could do as sheriff to make money, sell the smokeless tobacco, things like that. We don't, we're not in this to make money, but obviously that's not our goal. But there is fees and that commissary money then can be used, which you guys, as I became sheriff, passed a resolution, there's state statute how it's to be spent. Plus we passed a resolution to agree on things, how it can be spent. So we follow obviously those two, the ordinance and the state statute. Every year we buy, our cell phones are paid out monthly. We bought a patrol car. I bought a vehicle that commissary kitchen uses as a used vehicle and some other things that you can see the back end that's used out the jail. So I mean, I'll be glad if someone had a question, what something was or something to answer, but I want both obviously every item we bought, but.
I would like to say that I appreciate this. I'm kind of glad it's a, a state law now, because it used to not be. And I remember there were times when we had no idea what was going on with the commissary.
But I, I think it's transparency, because even at this meeting today, you're welcome to come out and call me anytime and come look at our books. I mean, it's public record, it's, it is what it is. We passed a resolution. There's nothing here that we're, at least me as the sheriff would want to hide or have anything. So anytime any council member for that member, you know, even if it's not today, it's in June, you heard something, come out and see me. We'll show you the books, you want to see something we purchased, that's no problem. We want that transparency. What's that?
And you'll sell us some chips.
Yeah, sell you some chips, make, make a dollar on it.
I do appreciate it.
Motion approved.
We really don't need a motion for this, do we?
No.
Okay, this is a report only? Thank you anyway. Yeah. All right, so that, do you have another item on here?
Uh, we have the, the additional appropriation, but because since the meeting's changed, we got to move that. Correct.
Yeah.
So I don't have anything. I just, I know that cares that pay, but still I saw the vote. I know I pass on the message from everyone that's on that list. Thank you for the support. They appreciate it. So thank you guys.
Appreciate all you all do out there. Next up is handbook policy, salary ordinance for a two-week vacation payout for engineer, an amount of $4,416.27. Looking for a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Ted.
Second.
Second by Rick. Any discussion on this? Roll call.
Ron Bacon?
Aye.
David Hockmeister?
Aye.
Ted Metzger?
Aye.
Brad Overton?
Aye.
Richard Reed?
Yes.
Greg Richmond?
Yes.
Chris Wetstein?
Yes.
That vote is seven zero. And then auditor, we need to do this encumbrance resolution. Got that somewhere in the stack.
I got my copy.
I did get that downloaded, I know. This would be 03?
Yes, sir.
Resolution, County Council, Warwick County Council Resolution Number 2022-03. A resolution of the County Council of Warwick County, Indiana, approving encumbrances from the 2021 fiscal year. I don't need to read the rest of it, right?
Correct.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion by David and second by Rick, or was it Ted? Okay, any discussion? All right, I'll, a roll call.
Ron Bacon?
Aye.
David Hockmeister?
Aye.
Ted Metzger?
Aye.
Brad Overton?
Yes.
Richard Reed?
Yes.
Greg Richmond?
Yes.
Chris Wetstein?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
We're good.
Did you have any question? Did you all want to have discussion on encumbrances or no?
I, I'll, I'll bring that up for you, Debbie there. I went and spoke with Debbie a couple of weeks ago about encumbrances and she explained a lot to me. She's always very helpful whenever I ask her for how things work. Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
She explained to me that a lot of encumbrances are very small, some, almost trivial, it seemed to me when we went through the report, some of them were. And I think we ended it. I told Debbie, I said, well, I, I see the need for encumbrances. I certainly do. I've talked to many folks since our meeting and have confirmed the need for encumbrances. I think the discussion would be that in the future, is there a need to reduce to small ones, to only be things that are larger than X dollars? Anything like that. And that was just really to open it up for discussion. I'm looking for advice and counsel here, opinions. I, I suggested to Debbie that she might bring that for a future date to talk about those things.
Right. And, and me, and if we as a, as officer and board can agree and kind of have some agreement on how we go forward with those and what is a cutoff and, and then, and maybe have those discussions even during the budget time so that people know that whatever they're, they're having budgeted for the next year, you know, it's, once the 31st of December comes, anything that's not submitted or, you know, designated for encumbrance, then we're moving on into the next year. Just, just, most people are making those purchases. They're just not getting them to us. The claims aren't coming in and so it's, it's, it's a lot of work to manage it after the fact. We spent, we had two, two full-time employees that spent four man paradays on encumbrances and then 300,000 of those encumbrances weren't even eligible for, to be encumbered or there weren't, there were no funds available to support an encumbrance. There wasn't anything in their budget to pull forward. So I think from my end, just managing that cutoff date, kind of pushing that back and, and maybe getting those claims in sooner would definitely help. And then if, if people know going forward, you know, if you, if you have purchases, plan ahead, make, make plans for those purchases and don't hold off until the last week of the year. I, I mean, I know in my own budget, sometimes you do find, okay, we, we have a little wickle room here and we can make some improvements in our, in our office. Sometimes those require your permission to transfer those funds into different categories. But maybe it's just on us as department heads and office holders to do a better job of looking at that last quarter of the year and planning, planning with our budget and, and making those purchases a little earlier and getting our claims in earlier. That's all. I don't even know that there's a decision here to be made, other than, you know, just letting people know we're going to push that date back and try to use that 1230 date as, as a cutoff for encumbrances so that we're working, you know, closer to the year and leaving current year behind and moving into the new year with the budgets. We're all fully funded.
Is this something that?
So.
Is this something that needs further discussion?
Yeah, I don't even know that there is a decision to be made here, but just other than kind of a heads up, that we're moving in that direction.
Okay.
Yeah. And I lay my emails down somewhere, so whoever got them. Thank you.
The number eight's been taken care of. I have signed what we have approved. Uh, transfers from E, this is EMA. Emergency Management. Transfer from the line item for equipment, four hundred dollars. Transfer to the line item for furniture, four hundred dollars. And transfer from mobile command line item, two thousand dollars. Also transferring from the line item for equipment, three hundred seventeen dollars. Transferring to office equipment, two thousand three hundred seventeen dollars. Need a motion.
Nobody here.
I can, I can speak.
They're going to have to learn to start giving. Motion to approve.
Okay. I was going to say, I can tell you.
I'll second that.
Motion by David, second by Ted. Now, any discussion from the council?
They say, why all of a sudden they need?
Yes.
This is my need to set up the new position, the Assistant Director of EMA. Copy paper, though? Just because you hired him, I mean, how's that, all of a sudden they're jumping?
Where do you see copy paper?
Contractual to copy paper, three thousand dollars.
That's the next one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, court.
All right, just ignore the old man right here. Sorry.
All right, roll call. Ron Bacon?
Aye.
David Hockmeister?
Aye.
Ted Metzger?
Aye.
Brad Overton?
Aye.
Richard Reed?
Yes.
Greg Richmond?
Yes.
Chris Wetstein?
Yes.
And that vote is seven zero. I did announce the encumbrance is a seven zero. I hope to make sure.
Yes, you did.
Well, it's good.
Now, the circus court guardian man light them. Transferring from contractual, three thousand one hundred dollars to these items, copy paper, one hundred dollars. General supplies, two thousand dollars, and printing, one thousand dollars.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Motion by David. Is there a second? Second by Rick. Any discussion on that?
To answer Brad's question, these line items did not exist within this fund. They, there was only contractual services. So we're trying to clean up, clean it up, and pay the claims from the proper line items.
Thank you.
And a roll call.
Ron Bacon?
Aye.
David Hockmeister?
Aye.
Ted Metzger?
Aye.
Brad Overton?
Aye.
Richard Reed?
Yes.
Greg Richmond?
Yes.
Chris Wetstein?
Yes.
And that vote is seven zero for the transfer. Any other business to come before the council?
Spark shop sever, four-hundred spark shop sever coming up.
Yep.
And again, believe it or not, I've got tickets.
Any sign up, signees on the sign-up sheet?
No, and I do have something that I need for each of you to sign and give back to me before you leave.
I signed that, if that's the
Yes.
school we had to go to.
Yes.
Heather should have my copy.
Okay.
What about public comments, or?
No, I looked.
Okay. See, no other business, I'll.
Motion adjourned.
Motion to adjourn by Rick, second by Ted.
Yep.
Yeah.
Tell you get four, right?
Ron Bacon?
He's already, he's already adjourned.
David Hockmeister?
Aye.
Ted Metzger?
Aye.
Brad Overton?
Aye.
Richard Reed?
Yes.
Greg Richmond?
Yes.
Chris Wetstein?
Yes.
We're adjourned. Thank you all for attending.
Bye, Ron.